Call the meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll consider November 16, 2016 agenda. First thing I'd like to do is on... One of two things, I'll let council make the decision, but I'd like to definitely unfinished business of 9B to be moved to the end of the agenda. Reason being that way Jim can excuse himself from that discussion. But I'd like to have him here for the rest of it. Now whether you want all of unfinished business to move to the end or just that one, I'll leave that up to council.
We could leave that till the end, just that one.
Just that one.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll move 9B down to the...to be the last thing on the agenda tonight. Anything else on the agenda?
Regular agenda or the consent agenda?
No, we're not to consent yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the moving of 9B to the end of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Jim, second by Sean. Approve the agenda with the change of 9B moving to the last thing on the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, then we move to comments, updates, and concerns, and we start out with citizens. Do we have anything from citizens tonight? Deanna?
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Deanna Carew, citizen of Gaylord. I have come before you this evening, and I want to preface my comments by stating that I respect you as city council members, the difficulties that you face in making decisions that affect the citizens of Gaylord. And my comments today are regarding the position for the city administrator position. I came to one of the interviews, I wasn't able to attend maybe your last meeting. I do want to thank your interim administrator for responding to my questions regarding the process for how your candidates were selected. You certainly know that I haven't always seen eye to eye with the council on issues affecting the city, but I trust that you would know that any time that I come before the council, my participation as a citizen is always with the interest of the citizens at heart. I think we have a common goal, we may not always approach it in the same way, but I love the city of Gaylord. I want to see it continue to grow and prosper, and so I think we're on the same page in that regard. The city of Gaylord is in the...at a crossroads of some great potential progress with the medical school and many other initiatives that you're considering. And whom you choose to fill the position of city administrator is going to determine the success and, I would even say, the failure of those initiatives. A person that may look really good on paper, has all the degrees and all the letters behind their name, home is personable, relates well to people, and great conversationalist, ability to engage people, admirable qualities. But the task before the city goes beyond those two qualifications. And I have to say tonight that I do not believe that the council is making the best choice for the city of Gaylord to move forward. And I also need you to know that I speak not from lack of knowledge of the candidate that you're putting before the city. And so I'm concerned. I know where you are in the process. I, for one, as a citizen of Gaylord, hope that this decision can be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens? Yep, you can do it right now and just go up and introduce yourself and what you want to bring before this council.
Okay. My name is Larry Glaski, and I recently moved to Gaylord on 509 First Street East. We do have a sump pump that pumps the water out to the curb. It's still running, and I'm concerned during the wintertime that, you know, the pipe outside is going to freeze, and I wonder what to do with the water during the winter. So I'm wondering if I could get a permit to, during the cold months or frost months, to be able to divert that water back into the system in the house. So it won't go down the regular drain in the house. I have a little disadvantage because I don't know your geography or your weather, so to speak. So I'll come before the council to see if I could get a permit to do that for the months that it's cold and freezing out.
Okay. My understanding is was brought before me, Ty, you investigated this, or Bucky went down to investigate this issue with him, right? That's what lawyers are telling me?
Yep. Bucky did.
Okay, I understand the situation. We've got some other houses in the city that are in the same type of situation, and there's a fee during the winter months that you pay for that permit. And what we can do as council is we can move on it if you want to move on it right away in front of us and put it before council if you may. And then what we do is by the address, and he has to go through the permitting process with city council, or with city staff. Rick?
You could reach a consensus right now and just move it to the consent agenda and be done with it. That's the next item anyway, but at least it would fall in line there with those type of activities.
I'm okay with it.
Then I just need a consensus around the horn here for...
Definitely.
Been verified by staff?
Yep.
Verified by staff with address and so forth, and get the proper permitting in place.
Sure.
Okay. We're going to put you under consent agenda, so if we don't hear nothing on the consent agenda, you'll get your permit, you can come up tomorrow and get all the paperwork done with city staff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
About a minute or two, hopefully. About a minute or two, you'll have the decision.
Okay, all right, very good then. Now, so far I really liked living in Gaylord. Of course, you realize I'm a German, and we chose to live near New Orleans because it's a German city. And Gaylord is about the same size as the city I lived in in Canada. And so when I drove to here, I said, "Boy, this is just really nice." So I thank you for considering.
You're welcome.
Thanks for picking Gaylord. Anything else from citizens? Council?
I do have one question.
Okay.
As I've been kind of out of pocket a little bit. Haven't seen anything, updates wise, as far as the water tower demolition and where we're at in that process. I did get asked a question the other day, and I have no answer, so...
I actually, I can touch on that, because I was thinking the same thing, Jim. I actually touched base with Justin Black yesterday, and it sounds like it's... The plan is to have a plan in place. There's still a few options, but by January, February have it nailed down, and then it's too cold to do anything now anymore, so it's going to happen in spring when it gets warm.
Yeah, there's some options that we've got to look at as council and decide which road we want to go down is what has been relayed to me right now.
And I thought you had said that in the colder months it wouldn't be happening.
No.
Right.
Realistically, I've done... One option that was thrown out there could be this fall yet, but realistically, whether that happens yet or not, I think some of that's going to probably discuss at our December 7th meeting if I'm...
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So that's going to be an agenda item. Rick?
Just a brief comment. I did get a message from Justin today on the matter, and I forward that, but I'm having computer issues from time to time, so I need to always verify if people get these things. I did suggest that that information be shared with the Gaylord Hub, so hopefully we can get a little coverage there in terms of the steps before us. Mayor Don and I are supposed to meet with Justin and a representative from the company to start to focus in on an option or two, and then my hope is we have a report on December 7th. The reality of it is it's probably going to be deferred till next spring.
Thank you.
Anything else? I have nothing either, so that takes care of the comments and updates. Consent agenda. I remove the consent agenda, look at anything you wish to move around there, delete.
I did not get a copy of the accounts payable.
Nor did I.
Nor did I.
So there isn't anything to...
No accounts payable?
Okay, oh, okay.
Okay, well, that's good.
So we should pull that from the consent agenda?
So no accounts payable are going to be under consent agenda.
And then we need to add the...
Sump pump waiver?
Yep.
And then add the sump pump waiver.
Stick that under other...
Nothing else. I'll make a motion, approve the consent agenda with the deletion of 5B accounts payable and the addition of the sump pump waiver.
Second.
Motion's been made by Chad Mokku, seconded by Sean, to approve consent agenda with the deletion of 5B accounts payable and the addition of the sump pump waiver. All in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, we don't have nothing there tonight. Communication requests and petitions, nothing there. Then we move on to number eight, department committee reports and recommended action items. We've got 8A. Considered approval of a formal ordering requiring Jerry Han, property owner, to remove obsolete business signs located at 520 Main Avenue. I'll leave that up to Don for the update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Back in September, I was asked to work on a situation where on the Blimpies Building, there's two signs, the Taco Depot sign and the bakery sign, that are still up, but there are no longer businesses in place. I was asked to take steps to address that. Section 153.202 of our city code does pertain to obsolete signs. To paraphrase, it requires a business to take down any obsolete sign. So after being asked to address the issue, I wrote a letter to Mr. Han on September 13th. I believe that's in your packet. I tried to take a diplomatic approach to it rather than just demanding it be taken down. I tried to approach it in the manner of, "Just so you know, this is an issue. Do you have a plan for taking it down? You know, our code does require you to take it down. Don't want to get to the point of the council ordering you to take it down, but, you know, what are you thinking?" So after I received that letter, I did have a conversation with Mr. Han. He indicated to me that the...there was another sign that he needed to bring a boom truck in to move, and he was waiting to take down the Taco Depot and the bakery signs until the boom truck was there, kind of a cost-saving measure. He had indicated to me that that should be done by the end of October. So after having that conversation with Mr. Han, I did write a letter to, I believe, Rick, it's in your packet, saying, "I've had a conversation with Jerry. He's thinking the 31st, is that okay? City staff felt that was fine." So I did send a letter on September 27th. This didn't get into your packet, but I'll just read it to you. I think it's important to know that this was sent out. It says, "Dear Mr. Han, I have talked with city staff and officials. The city is fine with giving you until October 31st to take down the obsolete signs on the Blimpie Building in light of the fact that you're waiting for them, or waiting for when you bring in the boom truck to move the corner sign. If you do not plan on moving or taking down those signs by October 31st, 2016, please let me know so other arrangements can be examined." Since writing that letter, I haven't had any further communication from Mr. Han. The signs are still up on the building. So now it comes to the point of whether the council wants to address the issue. Now, the code requires a business to take down the signs within 10 days if it's ordered by the council. So if you... In the event that you would choose tonight to order Mr. Han to take down the signs, I did prepare a draft letter of what I would ask the police department to simply serve upon Mr. Han. That's in your packet. And it simply says, "You must remove the signs within 10 days. If you do not do so, the city will take steps to remove the signs itself. If the city is forced to remove the signs itself, you will be billed for the cost of doing so. If you do not pay for the cost after you're billed for them, then they'll be assessed against your property's taxes." So that's where we're at. Since he didn't take them down by October 31st, haven't heard any reasons, haven't heard anything. So if you want the signs to be taken down, you will need to approve and order him to do so. If you are fine with the signs just staying there, then you would take no actions.
All this came about, and it wasn't from myself, like some people might believe, but it came from the head of planning and zoning. Brought it to my attention, and actually back when Kevin was here, Kevin spoke with him back last summer about the same situation too. So then when Orland came and talked to me from planning and zoning and asked me why the city isn't doing anything, put us in a situation as council, that's when this all got started. So it is an ordinance, it is what it is, so I think as a city, we did put our best foot forward. We've been lenient on the matter, so I guess we have no alternative, but I guess, you know, it's up to council which action they want to take, but I guess we have to listen to our other departments too that are underneath council.
I'd ask one...I don't have an issue with it. I was just wondering, a lot of times what ends up happening, within the 10 days, city gets a phone call, "Hey, we got a plan, here's the date, but it's not within the 10 days. Can we add a..." Within that 10 days, if there was a plan, a date given to the city, you know, a schedule to take them down, that would be permissible?
Yeah, I think what my plan would be is if you approved the order, and then we were made aware of the plan, I would then at that point ask the city staff to not take any steps to further enforce it until we bring the plan to the council and see if it's okay with you.
That'll work.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yep, me too.
So then before you, then I'd need a motion to take action on this, so Don can formally send out the notice of the ordinance violation for the 10-day removal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Chad Mokku, to send out order for removal of signs on the Blimpie property. Businesses that are closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Again, Don will send out that notice, and any action that he hears back will be brought back to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8B, review and accept the Gaylord Fire Relief Association, and Ian Singh's here to present that to us.
Ian Singh, I'm president of the Gaylord Firefighters Relief Association. It's been a few years since I've been up here to talk about it, and I do have good news, it's we don't need...we don't have to ask for any money anyway. Usually that's always the issue, but it's been...
You're welcome back anytime.
Yeah. Usually it's been every year, and I think since 2013 was the last year. But anyway, we had our audit done, everything came back, no problems. The one thing we are...according to the state, we got...we're kind of overfunded. I don't know how they can say you're overfunded. So what the relief is asking is to take our pension from 1350 to 1450. That puts us back into our funding state that we're supposed to be in. I don't understand all the regulations that they tell us, but... And then back in 2013, when I was up here, we talked about setting up some kind of a program to help us recruit, and I know we're having a hard time, and we're wondering about if you were in the option. The first thing was to ask about raising it to $100 to 1450, and that would require no obligation to the city, no money. We're...in fact, we could raise it more than that, but it's not what we want to do. The other option would be is to put like $50 a year for the next two or three years on that, so I'm not always...because if our funding keeps going, and I've been talking to Rick about...we're talking about going to the state firefighters' relief fund instead of having it done. All the paperwork we have to do now, and we have to pay for an audit, and the returns have been a lot better than what we're doing now because we've moved all our money into some real safe. So we're not risking it like we did a few years back. We're going to end up coming back every year and asking to raise it because of the state tells us we have to, and I don't quite understand it, but... So the option is either to approve the $100 raise to 1450, or to approve like a $100 raise and a $50 bump for like the next three years. We'd end up at $1,600 in three years. Right now, even at the $1,600, we probably...we don't need to ask for any money, not saying it couldn't happen sometime, but it's been...we were there for a while, we were asking for 20, 25, 30,000 because we had to catch up. And the relief that we have is based, you know, 26 guys, and it's funded on the first 10 years that a person is on. They...they're actually...the money's put in for them, but if they quit within the first 10 years, that money goes back into the pot and gets divided up with the rest of them. So they got to put 10 years on to get 10% of it, and then it's vested on up until you hit 20 years. So that's what we're actually here for. It's good news and for us anyway, so...
You guys will be looking at...looking into the possibility of shifting everything over to the state?
Yes, I can respond to that.
We're talking about...Rick was going to help us meet with the...some people and talk about that. That way, we don't have to pay Carla or have her mayor to do our audits, and we don't have to go through all this. We still have to do the Schedule Cs every year that tells us how we're vested. That's all we'd have to do. And that would take a little bit of responsibility off our own members as far as the investing, and we don't have all that paperwork to keep track of every month. It's all run by the state then. And it hasn't been done because when it first came out that the state was going to do that for the fire departments, everybody was worried that they were going to put their money in there, and the government was going to take it and build schools or something with it, and we didn't have nothing left, so...
Sounds like a reasonable fear.
And that's just what it was, and so when we brought it up, the guy said, "There's no way we're doing this." And so it's been like six or...
Five years?
Six, five or six years, but it's been going on, and it's done very well, and they've kept it alone, so they haven't touched it, so...
Right.
Ian's comments are fairly correct, are very correct. With regards to where the pension level is at this point in time, albeit we didn't do any extensive survey on this, having been a member of a fire department and a relief association and your...our discussion, what you're requesting in terms of the bump is very competitive. I'm not worried about that. The money appears to be there, or is there, but what's being requested from Ian in that regard, I think, is reasonable, and it should be given serious consideration. The state program that he's referring to is probably five, six years old. Initially, that's what the concern was. So far, that hasn't happened. I really believe, as I said to Ian, imagine the state of Minnesota trying to take pension dollars away from volunteer firefighters. I would not want to be at the Capitol that day.
There's protesters now there, wouldn't you?
Yeah. And the list of city relief associations participating, and this is growing by leaps and bounds. It reduces costs, it...the returns tend to be better with the state investment board. You are in compliance with all of the auditing standards for the city. The problem is, my good friend John King, who is the secretary treasurer for the Lacer Relief Association, who's also on the state board on this, I've only asked him three times to come on over. We'd sit down with the firefighters and have some adult beverages and talk about this, and it's a no-brainer. It removes the liability from the local group, and just trying to find volunteers to manage this system is a real task. And I think it won't be too many more years, about 90% of all relief associations will be participating. So I'm prepared to recommend tonight that you look at one of those two options, and then the goal would be to get some type of decision. My...remembering what the law requires, both the relief association and the city has to agree to become members. So that way, we're all going in it together. And I think you got to do that in December if you want to go into the next year, so it's...but it's not a crisis or anything right now. But if I can ever get John here, and he does a very good job on explaining the whole package, so...
Well, I like it anytime we can streamline something and get stuff set up so it's reoccurring and being proactive, so I'm all for it myself too. I see no problem with it. In fact, I see no problem putting a motion in front of it that we put the increments in place right away too, not only the one year, put the three-year increments that Ian's asking for in place at the same time.
That's a good motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made to bump it, the relief, $100 this year, and put a three-year increment after that of $50 each. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, then we move on to unfinished business. 9A, continued review on a proposed 2017 governmental budget and property tax levy. Rick?
Yeah, and for whatever reason, I've got a horse voice again tonight, so I don't think I was screaming too much at staff the last couple of days, so...but it's just a family trait. Basically, I kind of took the same approach that I would really try to highlight what changes are recommended relative to this budget. Again, a detailed line item budget has been made available to everybody through the Dropbox. I recognize, and that was just in the last day, I recognize that probably most have not had an opportunity to review that. And if there's a desire to do so, I would suggest that we look at maybe an hour workshop prior, maybe to the December 7th meeting, if we want to talk about some of those things more. But really, there's been a sincere attempt here to try to address a number of things that you should be well aware of and you should be considering taking action on. But you may recall that the preliminary budget at that time was looking at a 5.2% property tax increase. We've subsequently gotten that down to 3.1%, with a lot of what I feel are positive changes in the budget itself. And if you do factor in the taxable tax capacity, the growth in it, as indicated by the county auditor's office, which is estimated about 5.3%, in theory, spread across the entire taxing district, you should see taxes go down by 2.2%. Now, you could issue a bond in the next month that would require a property tax payment next year. You are allowed to adjust your final levy because of things like that. But I haven't heard anything from our bond advisor since the election, so I don't know if he's scared to give me a call or what the deal is, but anyway, so potentially a gross increase of 3.1%. With regards to both revenue and expenses, a lot of that is driven by new debt that's coming online. That's why you'll see some higher increases in non-tax revenue and debt issuance, total expenses, but anyway. Again, one of the items I always try to make very clear to the council is what action is proposed within the document itself relative to compensation adjustments. I don't know entirely what some past practices have been in the past, but the budget does recommend or grant a 1.5% cost of living adjustment, and that's based on a period that we've...I've used consistently in the past because it allows you to make an informed decision, but a few months... decision, but a few months in front of or prior to you having to certify your preliminary levy, so there's no guesswork there. So basically, the COLA for the period from July 1st of 2015 to June 30th, 2016, the COLA as per the federal government was 1.5% for, for Minnesota. The note number three recommends a, and again, let me back up, and that COLA, to the best of our abilities, we've determined that the impact of that COLA relative to the general fund would increase payroll costs by $5,353. The next recommendation relative to compensation was to, again, take some action relative to a compen study that was conducted by Mr. Gary Weers of David Drowne Associates in January of 2015. This budget contemplates that all full-time employees would be, or permanent would be granted a, a step in the compensation system that was previously approved, adjusted by the COLA that you're also granting. I think everybody will recall the first time around, you know, in the first draft, we did, I did assume that a scenario where we would be necessary, would be, it would be necessary to budget for the highest step in the range for the new city administrator. We know that's no longer the case, so I've made that adjustment back to the $80,000. That's currently within the conditional offer of employment. I looked at some of the past practices relative to how salaries are prorated amongst the funds, and I noted that some of the department managers and so forth, their, their compensation costs are spread amongst the different funds. At this point in time, the city administrator, accounting clerk are not. It'd make perfect sense to me to recommend that we, we kind of embrace a practice that's already happening within the organization and spread the compensation costs for those two positions amongst the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. I think in the case where this is already happening, I can't recall to what extent we've spread those amongst the other enterprise funds. It's pretty much sewer and water, isn't it? Okay. Okay. And that, I've noted the change here. So each, the total cost will be split 50% between the general fund and 50% between the water and sewer fund, basically 25% apiece. Note number six, we've talked about this previously, I recommended in the preliminary budget that the city-funded paid internship position, which results in an annual savings of $9,360, should be eliminated. I'm not recommending you never have an intern, but I really do believe there's other prospects for paying for it. So I guess, all things equal, I felt that, that money was maybe better served by addressing Point 6A. And the budget recommends that we look seriously at two 20-hour-per-week maximum positions, administrative clerical positions whereby that additional help would, could deal with a variety of issues with the intent of controlling costs, overtime costs, maybe reducing some of the workload, the stress, whatever. And the general funds costs associated with that would be about $12,500. And again, the balance would be spread amongst the other two funds. City administration department, I know that you folks have done this from time to time, a five-year financial management plan. In visiting with the credit rating agencies as we went through the review with the bond that has been approved but not officially sold, they were very impressed with the effort that's been made in the past. And the general rule of thumb is, if you could, do it annually; if not, at least do it every two years. And we told them at that time that we were prepared to recommend that that action occur also. So again, this next year. It's a $5,000 cost according to our auditors, and 2,500 of that would be borne by the general funds and the balance by the other, the utility and enterprise funds. I guess we haven't determined how that might be broken up. I think in this particular case, you could argue that you can spread the non-general fund portion of this amongst a few of the other funds because it's very simple to do it with a, with an expense like this versus payroll. This would be a clean way to probably have some of those other enterprise funds participate in certain costs. I think I've mentioned previously, this was not in the original draft, the, the cost was, but not the commentary on it. And, you know, given consideration to becoming a member of the Minnesota Valley Council of Governments, we view that membership as a potential staff multiplier to assist in a wide variety of tasks that, that city governments deal with. The organization itself has been around since 1969. We have, I think, 14 different city-county members at this point in time, and I've always felt that the, the value of the membership greatly exceeds the cost. And so it's appropriate we look at that. I've spent time with Tony, Chief Tony, talking about the, the pressure, the difficulty of recruiting part-time police officers. Not only is your police chief competing from time to time for full-time officers, it's even worse with part-time, fully licensed officers. And $15 per hour may have been reasonable a few years ago, that's not the case anymore. I think you and I were talking, Tony. I think my former employer's up to about 22 bucks an hour.
Yeah.
They've taken the first step of their step range and applied that to part-timers. So here again, regardless of what the needs are, the reality of it is, if you don't have an inventory or a roster of part-timers, you're going to end up spending that money in overtime and that for higher-paid, full-time employees. Or you have to look at level of services and things like that. Do you want to speak any more to that?
Yeah, there's that. For the, for our first time, it's just our step one where the pay scale was approved, so that's a little bit off for our employees.
Comment number nine, this was included in the last draft or the first draft. The budget does maintain the current level of expenditures that you have with regards to the city services department. That's to make sure that we take a conservative approach in terms of preparing to continue with that particular staffing arrangement. I've noted that from a practical standpoint, we are making some minor changes as we speak relative to some of the expenses that are tasks that are associated with that position. Give you an example, we're currently working with the Sibley County DAC, very competitive rates, the people do a very good job, we enjoy having them come in and vice versa. They did tell me they love coming here. It must be the free pop we give them from time to time. But really, we have that service now extended to this building. They've picked up what they, in addition to what they were currently doing for the library, that's been extended to their routine needs. We've talked about other facilities. Have we decided that they're going to maybe do bathrooms in the parks?
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah. They currently, currently clean at Sibley County Courthouse, they're doing 13 bathrooms daily, I think, up there. So the charge is $9.50 per participant. There is no charge for the supervisor that comes each and every time. That's borne by other revenue sources, so great program. So we're looking at some of those things. We're currently in a conversation with another city about possibly sharing some of the additional summer, winter temporary help. That party may be the bigger benefactor, but at least it would provide some benefit to. And I, there are times I view that, all things equal, it's incumbent on us as a city to help out other cities if, if they have needs, not only in terms of saving dollars, but also just in goodwill. So you have the monies available, no intent, no intention of ultimately, I mean, of just defaulting to that come January 1st or anything like that. We're going to continue to look at that, come back with other recommendations. We did appropriate an additional $10,000 within that department. That's to help provide seasonal help that has been missing in the last couple of years. And so we are talking about 5,000 available for buildings and grounds, and we can look at that, given some of the changes we've just, I just mentioned, and street and storm, stormwater. And those are things like, you know, working in the parks, maintaining the parks, and lawn mowing is a very big task, and we're best served if we can kind of use this form of, of help on that. So any questions on this one? Because this, this whole issue's evolving right now. And if you don't need the money, it'll be, go to reserves, you know? And you can designate it to capital or whatever, but we take serious your desire to look at some more cost-effective alternatives on this.
Sounds good to me.
With regards to potential capital and equipment purchases, basically, we have some needs in this next fiscal year, and then we have some longer-term needs. And typically, the longer-term needs are, are the high-ticket items that you've embraced a practice of trying to put money aside each and every year. And so when we do get to that point in time, you have the money in place. But I did make some, not changes, but some additional clarification on this. I know I went back to try to verify that I did indeed put money in for replacement of the iPads I had, but I hadn't necessarily detailed it as I should have here. And so that hasn't changed that much. And we're looking at $37,050 that is budgeted for in the proposed operating budget for these matters to be addressed next year, and they're basically equipment, office equipment and things of that nature. With regards to the larger capital projects, again, we're suggesting $120,000 be transferred to the appropriate capital outlay reserve funds in anticipation of the specified equipment purchases and capital improvements being addressed during fiscal year 2018 or beyond. I know there are some policy decisions that still have to be made with regards to some of this, and that'll be forthcoming. Number 12, albeit monies were appropriated for 2015 and 16, everybody, we all stepped back from that potential expenditure, given the outcome of the city administrator recruitment. We've discussed it here, we've discussed it with the EDA, and at least the general consensus is that with all of the potential activities associated with the medical school, you probably do need some additional staff that can help out on this. And at the EDA meeting the other night, we did hear a presentation from Roxy Traxler about their efforts to try to create kind of a county effort or partnership. I think it was a great discussion. Your EDA board felt that they wanted to continue in the process of having a dialogue with them, and some of your economic development needs may be addressed by that partnership, some may be addressed by this. So I think it was a very positive topic of discussion, and we intend to focus on that discussion quite heavily at the next EDA meeting. So if we can remember, we'll make sure that you're providing an agenda to that. So that is something that is of recent development in the budget, but it's something that I felt, I think many of us felt, we should at least provide the opportunity if that's the route to go. Point number 13, not that this is going to save the, the city any money per se, but I know the library board has been talking about, and along with the director, of coming to terms with the fact that it's a blended employer there. And it just makes sense for, given that the director's a county employee, everybody else becomes a county employee that manages a city library, we won't have the payroll function. I guess there's always the question of, you've got one boss employed by one, and other employees employed by others. Well, how do you deal with potential disciplinary issues and all that kind of stuff? So this made perfect sense. I think it's going to make life easier for everybody. I think presently, Barb has to approve two different sets of payroll sheets, and they gotta come in here and everything. So we think that's proceeding, and they, their intent would be to bill us quarterly for reimbursement. So we haven't quantified the savings in terms of some of the tasks we do around here, but I think it's a step in the right direction. Again, I did provide, just in the last day, actually Lori did, the detail, the budget detail, and we surely, I'm not necessarily prepared to go into in-depth tonight, my voice isn't going to hold up, but if you want to talk more about some of those issues, we can do so at a later meeting. Or if you just want additional explanation, you can always contact me and so forth, and we can, we can respond to it. One thing I should note is that coming into this process, somewhat ignorant in terms of your process, spent a lot of time just gearing up in terms of starting and coming to a conclusion. I thought, well, this is going to be easy, I'm going to rely upon Lori. Well, lo and behold, Lori hasn't been really a strong participant in this process, so it was a real wake-up call for both of us. I think it was beneficial for both of us to go through this process. I think it's incumbent that your finance person accountant knows as much or more about the budget than even your city administrator. So I want to publicly thank Lori for being a great team player and only rolling your eyes a few times as I asked ignorant questions and that, but, and again, we never had time in Lassure to try to get everything done by the September date. So we usually broke off the governmental funds, which I represent all of the property tax operations, worked on that, and then we came back with a utility enterprise fund a little later in the process. If nothing else, you've got more current data to work with. And then that would be approved, it all comes together in terms of a city budget. So we never had that luxury because we had so darn many things to work on. So that's kind of the approach we've taken this year. We'll be back in December to talk about utility matters. The whole process could change again, depending on how your new administrator and you want to approach it. But my experience over the years has been that a budget memo which addresses the major issues seems to be one of the more effective ways to discuss the budget, not necessarily going through 100 pages of detail. Gets a little boring after a while. So my intent was to make sure that every possible extraordinary expense, new type of expense, things of that nature were, were noted here. So with that, I guess I'll conclude my comments and answer any questions and concerns you may have.
Well, then we open it up to questions, and also council's wishes, what they want to do moving forward with the budget, whether having a workshop or moving it forward with questions of Rick, and finalizing it on December 7th.
Actually, you'll have your hearing, but.
Well, we can finalize.
There are things may come out of the hearing that you want to look at. So it's probably the.
December 21st.
Yeah. You could do it that night, but if you want to make any changes, you're better off to come back with the finalized version, unless it's so token that.
Right.
Well, for the first time, I, I'm comfortable where it's actually at, and we, we have enough holes that are not filled yet, you know, question marks to be filled in where, I, I mean, if, if the council wants to do onesie-twosie issues, add, delete question marks, and we have a 10-minute discussion on it next meeting, you know, pile them up, email them the Rick.
Yeah, that would be good.
You know, instead of, I, I'm just, this is the first time, I didn't know when we got it today until we got to the meeting, so.
Today we got it.
I, I know, I didn't know we had, you know.
Yeah. I don't think there's enough there to actually dissect it in a, in a workshop setting, because I. Because I kind of agree with Chad that we can probably go through all this. But at the same time, since we have another meeting to move forward before we have to finalize it, we got some time to deal with it before then.
Yeah, I think an effective approach would be to, if you're curious about certain things, just send me the emails, and then I'll rely upon staff or whomever to help me and put the response together.
One of these discussions, again, after our open meeting or open...
And I apologize for not getting it to you earlier. It was done, but I was focusing on some other issues last night, so.
And I agree with that, just email it. Without time to dissect, it's pointless to discuss at this point.
Right.
Everybody can have their own homework if they choose to do it.
That long Thanksgiving weekend, you can look at it.
While you're digesting a turkey. Okay, I got consensus. That's the way we're going to move with this, moving forward then. So that takes care of that.
Good, thanks.
Okay, then we're going to move down to 10A, new business. Consider a twelve-month extension for a letter of agreement dated September 11, 2015. And this is between Ridgefield Medical Center and the City of Gaylord to deal with our paramedic. And we have Dan from the ambulance department here to go over this with us.
I just talked to Daryl, and he's going to keep the fees the same as last year. And we're still working on the advanced life support, part-time license. So currently, right now, we plan on continuing with what we have, if that's okay with the city. So there's no up costs or anything.
It'll change its term, that's all it is.
Just changes term. So then we'd still have to run it by the motion and so forth to agree to extend the term.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of understanding.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Chad DeFlemming to extend the letter of agreement between Ridgefield Medical Center and the City of Gaylord. All in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries.
Then also, we had our election last month for our treasurer and secretary. And Tara Swanson was voted in as a secretary. And then Tony Drager was voted in as treasurer. So we'd just like approval through the city to let them take over January 1st for those two positions.
So there...
Just a formality, yeah.
Do we have to do a motion or consensus on that?
Should do a motion.
Okay, then put a motion on the new board members, whoever wants to do that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new positions for treasurer and secretary. Is that correct?
Yep.
For the ambulance.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Chad DeFlemming to approve the new members of the ambulance department, which are the secretary and the treasurer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Now we get the canvas results of the November 8th election.
This is sent to the year draw.
I don't know.
I don't think.
Are they too, or?
I didn't see it.
You don't see it?
I looked.
Here it is.
Is it in there?
Yep. It is.
Oh, what I did is the copy from the county. And then I recreated another sheet that was out who the tally is for our city as results. So the county needs...
That was last year's.
Yeah, last year's is in there, not this year's.
Yeah.
That isn't in there.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a summary document?
Well, this is a summary. I can make more.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
It's not, it's not... Last year's is in there, not this year's. We can look at that if we want.
Well, there was an empty, did anybody get an empty folder?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got an empty folder.
Maybe that was a...
I understood every bit of that folder.
That was easy. I assume something was supposed to be in there. It's like sending the email with all the attachment.
Yeah.
Can I imagine that would happen?
All the time.
Here's basically the summary that I had created for the council and for the county then.
Thank you.
Which will need signatures on it.
Is that EDA? Is that, remember we talked about that?
And so that is basically the county then sends me their abstract of the canvassing of the results. And then I just tally my results.
I thought I'd put some in there before I can look.
So I take it that Chad Molk and myself shouldn't be signing any of this since we're on it.
But your council members right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Traditionally, you still do, even though I...
I completely blanked that out, too. I should make a minute of my memo.
Do you have a master we sign? First, you should approve a motion approving the results as presented. I'll make a motion to accept the abstract and return of the votes cast for the council member and mayor.
Second.
Motion's made by Jim, seconded by Jessica, to approve the abstract and the return of votes cast for the mayor and council position. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. So whatever one you want to pass around as a master.
Jim's starting one here.
We've got five council members, so they can sign it. I don't have to. There's five of them.
And I will excuse myself.
Very good.
Jim, I think this, Jim needs to sign this document too, doesn't he?
That one also needs to be signed by...
Hi, everybody. Hang on, I forgot my... Is it the one that says my name or I can...
I think they're all blank.
It's my new sign. Can't see without cheaters.
Join the club.
True story.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It's funny, I can see a lot better without cheaters before I got cheaters and now that I got cheaters, I can't read a thing.
Your eyes get used to them, they depend on it. I just talked to Goldsmith last night at the meeting, at chamber meeting. He was there, and I said, I'll probably be coming in to see you because I'll be starting running into things.
Take care.
See you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Signed, sealed.
We've got one more coming around yet. Okay, then we'll move on to 9A, continued review on the proposed, no, I'm at 9B, I'm sorry. Status of the city administrator recruitment, Rick.
Yep, thank you. The conditional offer of employment that was approved at the last meeting relative to possible potential hiring of Kim Moore Sykes for the position, that was sent out again. Both parties actually experienced problems with their internet. So we finally touched base about Saturday morning, I think, and decided probably we should get together and just go over things. And basically, I wanted to meet with her to make sure there was no misunderstanding in terms of what the offer represented. If she had any questions, we should discuss those. There are instances where a chosen finalist or candidate may have a counter offer to provide. And my approach to that would be that, you know, if indeed there was a reasonable counter offer coming from the party, I surely would present that to council for consideration and provide a recommendation. If I thought that the request or the counter offer was totally out of line, I wouldn't even take it to the council or let it get to first base. Kim did accept every term and condition of the offer. I did start the process then of conducting the required background checks. I had her sign the appropriate paperwork. That information will be distributed amongst my team and I, and we will in earnest start that process and proceed from there. I know she had some questions for, regarding health insurance and things of that nature, so she did spend some time with staff on that also. Again, I want to continue to emphasize that, you know, the process is not complete. I think that the vetting, I was visiting with the city attorney today. We wanted to visit a little bit about that. I think that's at least a two-week process probably yet. And then we'll come back with the information in terms of whether, in our opinion, the background investigations have been satisfactorily met. And the final action in all of this is an actual employment contract that Don will be preparing, and then we'll bring it back for your consideration. So that's kind of where we're at on the process right now. And that's probably the extent of what I have to update you on today. I asked Kim what type of notice did she need to give to her current employer, and she said at least four weeks. So if you start doing the math, realistically, if it all comes to fruition, we're looking at January probably for her to be on site. So with that, I guess that's my update. Do you have anything further?
I have nothing further. I have a question. Are you including Tony to do some of the backgrounding too?
You know, actually, I haven't talked to Tony, but I'm wondering. All things equal, I guess I'd like to use Mankato Police Department, where, you know, that's who the COG team have experience with. I don't know if I'd like to put your internal law enforcement officials in the middle of that, but what do you think, Tony? I mean, it's up to you, as much as any.
And the city employees that we've done backgrounds on or like for the library or positions like that, you haven't done it.
Okay.
Is the Mankato PD at no additional costs or what's the relationship?
I need to ask that, but it'll be run through COG and...
Sheriff Polnats said he would do it.
Based on my experience, when we've dealt with some possible criminal action internally, I'm not saying that's the case here, but I always tried to remove the potential conflict, whether it's real or perceived. And I just think a third-party law enforcement agency should do that probably. It's not a line in the sand with me, but we can do the county too.
He just told me that.
Tony, do you have any problem reviewing them results if they come in from Mankato?
Yeah, we can have Tony look at everything when it comes in, Don. And again, I'm not necessarily an expert on the disclosure at that type of stuff, but obviously, whatever can be released to the council will be, so.
Yeah. I'm just looking for checks and balances. Council have any other questions at this time?
I do not.
I do not at this time either.
Thanks for the input. That was a good suggestion.
So that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. If council has anything else they want to run by, everybody had notices or anything like that? Not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. You got something, Chad? We're not adjourned yet.
She brought up the county. I just, not that they're connected, but they...
I don't think that'd be good.
Yeah, I just don't, okay.
Just because she's employed by the county right now?
You know, that way...
Yeah, yeah. But to me, that kind of relates to what I talked about earlier, too.
Right.
This was even before we even picked anybody. He just said that he would do the background check.
Yeah, that's fine. I think it's best interest of probably with Mankato is fine. And with the review from Tony.
And I'll make every effort to make sure we get a good price break, if no cost at all. In any case, the information will be shared with Tony immediately.
Very good.
Sounds fair to me.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Chad DeFlemming to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Guess what I got?
What?
I'm a grand juror for the...